Recording in progress.
Yes.
We need a problem.
Success.
One nation. I'm like, uh, get it as well. So that we can just start all.
Uh, would someone mind going up and, uh?
Okay.
Not with it. Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. Um. We have a form, another form. Concerned agenda and the minutes of July twentieth, twenty-three regular council meeting and you did all review a. Did I say July? Yeah, oh, June twentieth, twenty twenty-three regular council meeting and you did get a revised copy of the minutes. It was emailed and also at your chair today based on a couple of requests from counselors. So. Um, do I know what you approve?
So.
Second?
Second.
This discussion? Hey, hear none? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
But?
Opposed? Motion to adjourn. Uh, any word from them? No, okay. I assume the public, uh, anybody on Zoom having anything for items from the public? Okay, seeing none, we don't have anybody in, uh, council chambers either. Moving on. Uh, resolution number twenty twenty-three, Acto Four, a resolution of the of Raymond. Uh, permitting the display of flags on public property against government speech. This is a resolution that was given from our last meeting and it's been revised and I write the motion as such. That piece.
Okay. Motion, move.
Okay, is there a second? Second? Okay, discussion? Any discussion?
Uh, I got, I got a little bit of discussion.
Okay.
Uh, the last section that talks about the flag or the displays within City Hall.
Right.
Um, my only concern is, is that, and it says the mayor has a discussion to approve or not approve that. Right?
Right, okay.
Uh, my only issue with that is, is. I'm not sure. I'm not sure if, if people have, if somebody working here has an issue with something that is up here in the building. How do they resolve that or how do they make their, uh, concerns known? Do they come to you?
It depends on who it is. Okay, so say, uh, Tia had, say Tia puts a, a flag up, I don't know, uh. Baseball flag or something and somebody doesn't like that piece.
Yeah.
Okay, they would go to her supervisor.
Yeah.
Would, the department head, which would be Kayla.
Kayla.
And if Kayla doesn't resolve that issue, then, um, they would come to me.
Okay.
And if I couldn't resolve it, then I don't know where I would have to come to the council for.
Okay.
For resolution, or, but I don't, I can't imagine that that would ever be an issue.
Well, I, I, I can't even, but when you do these policies, uh, it's not only for the present, it's for future.
Absolutely.
And so I'm just thinking about if, you know, if something gets put up in here that, that, uh, you know, maybe the council has a. Maybe a two or three council members don't like it or approve it, what's the process for resolving that?
Right, and it's not separate right now, but when the new city hall is done, everybody's gonna have one office. So it will be, you know, they'll be decked, able to decorate their office how they should fit. So if they wanna put a.
Sort of.
Yeah, well, no, they can't put new photos, you know, they can't use a new, put a new calendar up.
Okay.
You know, and add those nudes for twenty twenty-seven, but.
Okay.
But, you know, if they wanna put a Yankees poster up or a D.C.'s flag, or they wanna put a pride flag in their office. They have that option. It will be their space.
Okay.
So.
All right, now, I just, I just was gonna throw that out there 'cause I, I thought, uh, you know. In the future, you may have, uh, you may have some issues that arise and somebody's gonna pull the policy out and say, whoa, American.
Right.
Okay, good enough.
You know, and, and potentially, you know, if, if they don't get, if the employee doesn't feel heard by their department head. They, they would easily change, they'd come to council on the street. This has been an issue and I, I can't seem to get it resolved.
Okay.
Internal. Case on.
I thought at the last meeting, we were talking about the flags that were gonna go up on the, the posts outside with, by the American flag and the state flag.
No, nothing will be pulled out there except flags that are either, that the very right underneath flags displayed on city-owned property shall be displayed in accordance with federal and state. Uh, statutes and regulations, including but not limited to United States Code, revised for, and revised for abortion. Nothing else will fly out there.
Thank you. I just have one tiny question.
Yeah.
The flag at the carriage museum, where would it go?
Uh, I'm gonna, I've been talking to, um, Jerry Bowman and that will go where will be, be, uh. Can be seen from the highway, but will not interfere with any, like, the crews in or the caravan that comes in, you know. No place that would interfere with in and out traffic on, at the park or anything.
So still be able to get like a park thing?
Yeah, so we, we sort of have a spot, I think, that will work. So.
Thank you.
Yes.
So are we talking about a new flag pole that is not on Z property?
Uh, well, Riverfront Park is, it belongs to the city. Where it is an exclusive flag pole that will only fly a commemorative flag that has received a presidential declaration. And if there's no presidential declaration flag to be flown, it will fly the city flag. And the city flag is on order. So, and it will look there. Anybody have one? No, nobody has it. But it says the city of South Bend, there's trees, and it says, and the Raymond, si- geez.
Wrong footage.
King Raymond, uh, um, we'll talk, we're crazy.
Who'd you, who'd you send?
Uh, Tia, actually. This is the city of Tia. Yeah. And, uh, it's white with black and the, the wording is in red.
Okay.
It's, I wanted to stay with the, the colors of the high school or the school and, um, it looked very nice. So.
So the city hall would be the one where we could fly other flags, is what you have?
City hall will fly, uh, what I just said is the city hall will only fly the flags that are out there right now. Nothing else.
Okay.
Nothing else at city hall or at, um, um, or at the park. That has the honorary flags and the memorial posts will never change. This will be a separate flag pole.
So the one that, the one at the, at the carriage museum will be the one with the commemorative plus?
It's not even there though.
Yeah, but that, that's what I was, that's what I, I'm, yes. Trying to get it all, it's under my head. Um, and, and you said only commemorative ones that have the presidential approval?
Has, has received a presidential declaration.
So like if the should have tried one and fly one, they could.
Not unless it's received a presidential declaration.
Okay.
And actually, there's probably close to a hundred flags that have received over the years of presidential declaration.
So it's any, not a current presidential declaration, it'd be any that's received any presidential declaration, yeah, okay. So maybe the bishop tried it. There's gonna be a declaration for this.
Absolutely.
So, I mean.
So.
My other question was, is this a press reading? Does it need two readings or is this just?
A resolution does not require two readings. A resolution is just a, basically a city policy. Um, it's kind of ordinance is a law and that requires two readings.
Right, uh, that's a good plan.
Okay, I'm changing. Uh, I don't have the good seal or something. She was gonna show you what it looks like. I'll try to fix it.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
So, any additional questions or comments?
No, I think it's a good, I think it's a good middle ground. I like it. Thank you.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Thank you very much. This is, uh, a huge.
I'm going to absolutely.
So. All right, uh, she'll keep that, so I guess she can get, uh, screen for you. Um, ordinance number nineteen twenty-five and ordinance adopting and updating the comprehensive plan providing for the repeal of ordinance fifteen sixty and fifteen seventy-seven. And providing for an effective date. This is the second reading. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some moves.
Second, okay, um, discussion. Yeah?
Yeah, I, I still have serious issues with our planning and use of this. And I don't think we have thought through that enough to move this forward. And then I also have issues with, um. The idea that it, it contains things solely for the purpose of being able to apply for them for grants. I think that's a backwards way to do this. I think that we need to, independent of any grants, we need to determine what we need. And then go after those things because if we, if we load the plan with kind of a catch-all attitude to be able to apply for grants. Those grants don't necessarily follow the mission and vision in the comp plan. They just allow us to get freebies that may be good for the city, may not be good for the city. May not follow what we want long-term for the city. And so I, I think that that approach is flawed and we need to go back to the beginning, revisit the vision. And really bet out if these things alone, or if they were just put in there to catch free grant money. So I, I have big issues with this kind of comp plan.
Well, um, I think that, uh, whoever's on the council, um, and wants to be, and wants to participate in the next comprehensive plan. Um, it's coming down the pipe very, very soon. So, um, that would be your opportunity then to, um, participate. And work through that process. So.
But this is also an opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand. I, I'm just throwing that out there. So any additional questions or comments?
Just like the, also once again, thank Will for all the hard work on this. You, it's a lot of information put together, so.
Okay.
And I don't know about anybody else, but when I was reading it, I learned a lot. So, thank you for that.
Okay. All right, any, anything else? Okay, all those in favor?
I have a question.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Ordinance number nineteen twenty-six and an or, and ordinance amending the city of Raymond's Shoreline Master Program and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading as well. Do I hear a motion? Some moves?
Second.
Okay, so moved in second and third session?
Can I just ask one little question about that? Um, so doing this does, it supports the work being done on parts planning? Is that how I should understand it?
So Shoreline has, um, development regulations.
Okay.
And ours is actually fairly current, but when you open the comp plan, that's the time. But the legislation makes the, something's correct, or it's, uh, you have to, that needs to add in or something. They require you to open it as you do it to more update it instead of.
Thank you so much.
And we passed the first and the last meeting, which is what was holding us up.
Yeah.
The, uh, the splashmark.
Got it, okay.
Which is kind of where you were thinking, right?
Yeah, 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 that's why I was like, being sure, I was like.
Yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, so hear none? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn. All right, next on there is the planning random example that man I shared at the, I believe, at the last council meeting. Um, I look, well, without, anyway, so, um, it's in your packet. Um, so you guys can just, okay, it's effective.
I just, I just, I mean, I appreciated the outline. Are you, I guess my question is, is when you're sharing that form. That what you'd like to see us, yeah, sorry, sorry. Uh, so the form that you, that you shared, is that something you would like us to institute as part of all of our planning processes? Is that something that you think, um, is only specific to kind of around the comp planning? I was just trying to figure out, I mean, I, the process and the procedures need, makes a lot of sense and I appreciate it, the fact that it. Uh, clarified like here, this is why we're doing this, this is why it's the solution that carries, is that something you, that's why I was just wondering, is it like a comp thing or is it like all of our planning process?
So, City of Redmond uses it not to, like, the memo isn't, okay, we're gonna do an update to the comp plan, so we use this memo.
Okay.
That memo is, we're bringing something to the council to review, that memo goes with it. Whether it's a flag resolution, whether it's the, um, TIB grant, whether it's the six-year street plan, whether it's, um. A, you know, a labor contract, it can go with any of those and does. And like, the woman that I know used it, she regulated the sandwich board advertising signs in town. If she needed something to go in front of the council, she wrote up her reasons and things like that on that form. And it goes along with an idea that we've talked about several times on, where we could get an executive summer. Because we get an ordinance, it's got some past clauses in it, but we don't get a, this is why we want it. We find out at the meeting, but we could get that in advance and read the reasoning and the justifications and answer all those questions about, is it in the budget? Things like that. We could get all that out of the way earlier and I think it would get things through faster. Um, and I think we would all be more informed of things we're voting on, which I think is a good idea. Um, so does that answer?
Yeah, I guess my other question to that though is, is that, is the expectation? Because when I look at the document, I don't just see that as an internal use. I feel like if we were to adopt something like that process. And that would be the expectation I'd have for any community member, any organization, our sub-managers that are doing with our pool or something like that, come in with that kind of a setup. So is that, is that also the intention? Is that it's not just for our internal working, but it would be basically a, a basic form? Community members could access to bring things to the council?
That's fine. I don't think I didn't think it through that part.
I think at, at first point, okay, I'll, I'll go just a little bit back and how I potentially, doesn't necessarily have to look like this.
Yeah.
But I understand this, it's just an example. Um, and I, I agree, and I have, um. Talked to the department heads about, and I know what you're talking about, because they used to do it, the executive memo type.
Yeah, we tried, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I was on the council at the time and I did really, I liked it. I appreciated it and it was very helpful. And I, and I'm going to suggest that, that we do that, go back to that.
Mm-hmm.
Which is very similar to this, it's just maybe not as complex, that would go with, you know.
Yeah.
So I, I get what you're saying. I do understand. And I also think what he brought up is an excellent thing, that if whoever the director of the pool is or whoever comes. From the other theater or whatever, I think they should do something very similar to that. We can make this available on our website so they can, uh, if they're gonna come to council, then they should provide us with some information and in payments. So.
I also feel like it's something that, 'cause one of the things I noticed in navigating a large county-wide event recently. Was that the other city had a pretty simple process for like, this is what we're doing, this is logistics of it, this is our expectations. Whereas Raymond Town like sent an email, right? So I saw it as having a use, you know, it has an outline or as a base document, it has a use not only internally to our processes, but it would make Eric's job a lot easier. Like, oh, we got this permit or a request to do this event in the community, here's the outline of it, here's what they're expecting, right? So that we could have a more.
And we. And we actually do have a event application.
Oh.
And it's been updated and it's on our website now. Um, so it's just not been utilized like it should be. And it does have a whole list of checks and balances and what is required or not required, depending on what you're doing.
Yeah.
Um, and, um.
Well, I will fit it down and share that with them.
So, yeah, it's, it's a good piece of doc, it's a good document, I think. So.
We had it and so generally, I guess, the little involvement that I had with the grant was more like, hey, wanna have? Put it on the wall.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Didn't realize there was gonna be so much more, 'cause we did create that document, uh, a while ago. And it was more to make sure we're, I can capture, because if you have balance balances or something, then you need to provide the city with, uh, insurance.
Yeah.
Part of our insurance requirements. So we, we did try to make that so, what we know about, I mean, would do the document out, but we're gonna actually put on, but.
Yeah, I wasn't able to, before I sent the email, I called Tia and was like, who do I call? Because I was looking online and I couldn't find it. So I think some of the other community groups, uh, were having find, trouble finding it, so.
Kind of like in the past, we're just getting busier and there's more happening.
Yeah.
So in the past, it was easier than that. We get that, we have like, make the festival, maybe, you know, not a whole lot.
Yeah.
So it's easier to relay that information. Now there's numerous things going on apart at the same time, so, um, it would be nice to have that information relayed out there.
It's, it's, and, and as he said, it's getting busier. We need that count, we need that for tracking. So we don't, the city doesn't rock them all or miss something and, 'cause it is really pretty busy.
Yeah, so what you're talking about, thinking the overall idea for doing something with this, right?
Yes.
Because I, I think that a form like this would be too time-intensive for every, you know, internal use.
Yeah, and I think that if you see what I have in mind and what has been done in the past. If I think we put one together for the first time and you see it, I think it's a life.
Okay, 'cause I, I, I was looking at this one and it just seems like there's too many checkmark, you know, too many things you have to, you have to coordinate. And it works for the city of Redmond, but their population is, you know.
Yeah.
Significantly larger, as is their number of departments, as is the number of employees. So I don't want it to be an additional stress on, say, Eric, to have to fill this out every time.
Yeah.
Something like this out every time. You're talking about streamlining the process and making it faster.
Yeah, I think that, I think that once you get going, I think that all of you will appreciate it. Um, will, uh, you just give the information that you're looking for. So. And if not, then we'll, we get, we do. So. Maybe never why, I'm just kidding.
I just want to thank you for bringing that as an example.
That speech is a pretty low bar. Um, I, I think that we should all be able to fill it out. It's not gonna have all these things. But the idea that it has like, did you check comp plan, did you check this plan, did you check the street plans? Really, I, I really, really like the, there's the outcomes and there's the anticipated result if not approved. I was like, boy, those would sure make things really clear. And I thought about our, um. Oh, the ordinance we put, you put together for drug offenses and like. How clear-cut it would have been if you would have this and put something in the anticipated result if not approved, like. That just, you make sure that you think about a way to put it in terms of we can really understand it quickly. Which you did, but there could be more complex laws that we didn't. So I don't, like, I think about what I have to do at work and pulling out forms. This is a real easy form. Um, so to add the bulk of this on doesn't seem very difficult.
Well, to be, to be fair, if we have this information beforehand, you can check the comp plan and see what it matches up to. Instead of putting all the orders on them. This is, you know, just putting that out there. So.
But I think we've been working through it. I, I don't see it as being too hard for us and easy.
Okay, should I?
Yeah, yeah.
And the, and the expectation is this is to be used by who?
I think it would be used by the department heads. I mean, I, the way I look at it is you would see something to, like, I would have put together. Some, like, a cover letter, it wouldn't be a cover letter, but, you know, uh, maybe a second or three. With that running, with explaining the point behind the resolution, why I did what I did, what, what the outcome, what my whole outcome would be. What my plan was, what would, what potentially could happen if we didn't do it, okay? So in the first reading of the ordinances that are on here, it would have went with the first reading. So it has a general idea of what that means and what the process is behind it.
Okay.
I actually think that it can be helpful for stuff, because a lot of them have to write something up on like, what do they wanna know? Or this would be kind of set up where it's like, okay, this, this would be helpful to people. Versus sitting there for all being like, oh, should I have that, or not have, you know, it could be helpful.
Yeah, and sometimes when you're sitting up here and you ask a question, it kind of puts us on the spot, because you may not be able to answer it right then and there. But when you're sitting at your desk and you're actually working on this, you have that information right there handy, you're picking through that already. Whereas I wrote that ornament or that resolution two weeks ago. So. But anyway, maybe I make sense.
Yeah.
So any other, um, anything else you wanna discuss? And like I said, we will, um, start putting in, uh, into the processes.
Yeah, I just said the issue, there's a.
There's the special event permit application.
Wow.
And it is two pages. So, um, the second page has a lot of, or maybe it's at the bottom.
Oh, yeah. Well, there it is. Still looking for that.
And there was this citizen, I, and there is a person within the community was, that was concerned about. People violating, uh, RCW, um. Nine A, eighty-eight, oh, one, oh, which is indecent exposure. So we revised this and said they have to comply with all aspects of that RCW, no exceptions. So, and that, that made them very happy that we added that to our, um, special events.
Cool.
So this we cannot.
So the nudists aren't gonna be able to?
Cannot, the kids cannot ride your bike and then.
Yeah.
Oh.
Aw, man.
All right. Oh, and there is the flag.
Oh.
Very nice, very good job.
The red may be a little bit, a little C B red or a Nike outrun.
That would be, that would be good.
Yeah, that's kind of.
He made it stand out, or just a little. Yeah, I think that, like.
A little braiding.
The tree should be a little taller.
Here it goes. Here it goes.
They do it with bees.
Yeah, do not throw them weed.
Okay.
Well, we tried green and they, they really faded them out fast, so.
I think it looks good.
So any, we want to, the, the, or want to move on?
There's a ban on fireworks in our home. Okay. Sorry, what?
Um, so we'll move on to department head reports if you guys feel like we've discussed this.
Did you have?
Okay.
Yeah.
You good to move on, Ian, since you were the one that bought the council? You good? Okay. All right, department head reports, fire chief, Vidian?
I'm from the mayor, so we've been pretty busy lately and the speech issue not giving you much of a feeling this year, so. I'm just hoping everybody makes good choices. I don't know whether you have a very safe and sane Fourth of July, and you put yourselves, but, um, that's all I'll get for this. Peacefully, so you can have the answering questions when you have them.
Okay. Um.
I guess we, I guess we, are there any restrictions on fireworks?
Um, all fireworks in the city have to have, um, the same, same people as the state car, I'm sorry. And I'll move on on your website there, there's, uh, a wish that it was on our website.
And you know that there'll be illegal ones, but it's impossible for the police to get there and do anything about it, because, like, I make that up and then the police get there.
They're on, it's done.
They're in our house. Oi.
You did.
Um, anything else for? Chief Vidian? Okay, hear none?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, countywide burn ban, right?
Yes, there currently, um, perhaps, kind of, there's a countywide burn ban on debris burning. So, um, recreational campfires are still allowed as long as they're in an approved fire pit. So.
Okay, that's what I was curious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, G. Um, police chief, Pat Matlaw?
Uh, thank you, Baron. A whole lot. Uh, thanks, officer, for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Um, it's probably hotter here than it is out there, but.
Right now.
Well, it's gonna give you that, but, so, uh, we've been pretty busy as well. Things have been picking up for us, the summer months. Um, obviously, anybody that lives here can see the amount of traffic that's going through town lately. And that's not our primary focus, but it does cause a lot of chaos sometimes for us. Uh, that's been going pretty well. That's been going pretty well, and we we got a few arms in the fire that we've been working on. We have uh our officer's off FTO, so he's actually out shipping out, really helping us uh all over town. And um the last weekend, the weekend before went very well for us for the uh things were going on in town. And we didn't have any major issues, which was a blessing to us and uh was a uh you know. Kind of a token to the rest of the people that were involved, so um other than that, we're just gonna keep moving forward. Do a good job for it.
Any questions or comments for?
I just wanna, I just a comment, I just wanna say thank you uh for the work that you did uh last week, keeping our downtown district safe. And for the officers that showed up and the way that they worked with the security that were on site and the sheriff's department and everybody that showed up. Um it really, I think, put a message out to all of us that in the community that we were safe and that we could. Share our opinions and either direction together in the city safely, so I appreciate your work on that and coordinating that for us.
Thank you very much, we were in constant communication with each other all weekend, so uh it was great, it was good communication.
Appreciate it.
Any questions?
The uh the night out is August first.
Yeah, August first, that's full steam, uh we're actually picking up more and more people that wanna be involved there. Uh Dana Williams, our our secretary clerk, she sent out several letters, uh actually. City Hall did with her and sent out uh quite a few people to see if they wanted to be a part of it or donate. Uh we received some sizable financial donations from that. Uh also received people that wanna put a roof up or have some educational material there and be involved. We also received a lot of letters that came back, your term center, it's supposed to, you know, it's six, one, six and a half the other. But I think it was a pretty good outcome from the community, sparks who wants to be involved. So yes, it's uh very well. After they, well, they don't send a cast of the ground.
All right, any other questions or comments for uh Chief Matlaw? Okay, hearing or seeing none, um public works director, any questions?
Um I think we talked about the water tank being complete, um so that is done. Um bid opening will be July thirteen on our budget for this year for the streets for Fowler and your burn Harvard. So we're excited to get those done, we're all coming, budget that we hope. Um all I have, maybe some questions or comments?
Actually, I have two. One, um I know that it's probably, I don't know, you saw it out there, uh at the MWC conference, they discussed that um starting on July first of twenty twenty four. It will be required that all city contracts, uh the contractors have fifteen percent of the labor hours total uh with apprenticeship. So I wasn't sure if you'd been made aware of that yet, or if there's any plans as you're thinking about next year's projects. Um anything that breaks ground after July first, that's a requirement towards it.
Definitely something we know I'm looking to.
Yeah, I'll send you.
Like yeah, I mean, most of the bigger underground grant, other than that, specific uh you know, rules and stuff.
And I and I hope you assume that both contractors, those contractors will be made aware of that twenty twenty four, but I have not talked there about that.
I was just gonna offer to send over that thing, that I have in the handout, so you could see what they were talking about, it was just to send you the other word.
Yeah. Yeah.
But that's not for this year, it's for twenty twenty four.
No, it starts in twenty twenty four, but anything you're planning that you take a contract from now that has broken ground on July first, it's a case.
So if it breaks ground on like June thirtieth, twenty twenty four years ago.
Good.
They go through that and all through now.
Certain thing has to be done by June.
No pressure, really.
And then my second question was, is I know it's been a few council meetings, I know we had a pretty crazy one last time. But has there been any any movement forward on having the pool assessed? Has there been any forward movement on the pool situation at all?
So at the moment, the our pool is running.
Would the many might present a report, are you ready or would you prefer to table it until the next meeting? I just got a new update from Tia, so I wanna look over that information before I submit like a formal report. But uh I think Eric, he knows all the details and if he wants to, he'll have a great thing, I just know that a lot of the money.
No problem.
All the, yeah, all the uh John.
Was a big, a big jump for the guys.
I, all the fish we're getting, uh I think yes, we'll probably need a a more detailed role for small civilians in the future. Um but at this moment, the pool is running, um we are getting pricing, cause maybe you don't know. Are there grants available? Well, we still didn't price anything anyhow. Um on replacement of the heaters or different types of heaters, um. But the issues the pools had, there's some drainage issues, grains on top and so we're getting the pricing together, so. Won't affect this year's budget anyhow, um but so we can make a decision on how to move forward and and what to do and hopefully get a grant. But we're really compiling it, it's really working through to get the best information we can.
And I we might add that Tia has first and foremost, and I was gonna mention this on the right mayor's report, but I'll tell you now, she's putting countless. Countless volunteer time over there, working so hard. And she also contacted the YMCA in Aberdeen. And he came over and um did an assessment and said that he would be more than happy to come over at the end of the season. Walk them through a shutdown process, help them with procedures. I mean, this girl right here, she's she's a rock star, she has worked so hard over there. Painting, pressure washing, mucking, she's done a lot.
I I did see the post that thanks to thanks to Tia, the splash pad is open, so.
Exactly, yeah.
It's not what I use, so it's a great pleasure to see here, there's a million kids in it. I go over, turn on every morning, turn on every night, so our options.
I I hope that we can get a um splash pad instead of using having what we have. Because what we have requires fencing, uh massive signage, uh the insurance is very, very particular. Whereas a splash pad does not require anything. I mean, it just require insurance, but it doesn't require fencing, it doesn't require signage, it's just.
It's just a pan.
It's a run through.
And maintenance wise, it's a whole hose down, it's nice comparison, every day I have to that power.
Yeah.
Wait, um.
Honey? Oh, no, excuse me, the first meeting we had, I my understanding was that there were two problems, one was the physical plant. And the other was management, I'm wondering if the five oh one C three has put together an actual budget. That uh that you could rely on to, you know, to see if we need to invest more money uh at at some point in time.
I didn't help with that, uh we did receive one today and if you guys wanna meet up, we can go over our forms, what they've given us. And then we can go forth and report back.
Okay, great, thanks, Ken. Could could we seek a little bit of legal help here? I'm really nervous about not having an operating agreement with the five oh one C two outlining whose responsibility to fly.
And I had said that I would take care of that, and I quite truthfully, I've been shoveling sand against the tide for the last two and a half weeks.
Okay. Yes. And the shoveling, all that sand down at the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not, got that.
I I think that that starts to clear up.
Yes.
A lot of the issues there.
So I promise I will have something to look for the next.
Okay, so I was gonna wait till council come and put it seems to fit here anyway, so I'll bring this one. I have, I am over the last, if I'm on the council. Um have suggested and asked for inspection reports on our assets yearly. So that we can budget against the conditions of those assets. Those pictures that were brought to us by the pool, that's that's not a one-year problem, that's not a two-year problem, that's that's a system problem. And if we had these inspections processes, our asset, we should inspect it, we should repair it, uh those things don't count. And I want, and I would, Eric somehow or another put together a spreadsheet with our assets on it. And an assessment of what of where those things are at in their life. What the HVAC systems ages are, a roof's ages, blah, blah, blah. So when we get to budget time and we pull it out and we go, we need an HVAC, we need a roof, we need foundation. It's a planning back to, you know, and back to party Ian's piece, it's a management tool that we need to have, but we don't have.
And I agree, uh so we did last year, the council, you know, we have put together a campus facility plan, which has a lot of that. Um we started, you know, doing more of a detailed list of what buildings we have and what they need, so we, that's also part of that, helped that through.
Okay.
Uh that's what I would, kind of the pool, you know. It's it's where we're at now, so uh but what I was getting at is back with the uh wanting to do a rule for an agreement. I think it'd be a short-term agreement for this year, who's paying? Because I foresee doing much after now dealing more with us, with Tia, and playing some games together, what's something that costs? And just really was there a much more in-depth roles responsibilities for management side. And I think that the tension, it it may need, well, it may need a position as not volunteer to property, but.
Here's the issue, if if there's if there's an issue down there, that's an engine issue associated with five oh one C, they're not gonna sue now, they're gonna sue us.
We we do have the, you know, the inspection for the elevators and the pool outside of the pool, we have the fire extinguisher plus things, but uh.
But the facility itself, you know.
Right, and right, and you can't have a sixteen-year-old doing.
That type of work.
That type of work.
Thank you.
Can't, you cannot.
Yeah, I understand.
And and that's all I'm gonna say.
Yeah.
So should should we look at getting, like, you have a theater manager, should we look at getting a specific facilities pool manager as well?
We're not looking at anything right now.
Okay.
We're we're still, we're still working through this process. Again, I can tell you that I reached out to AWC and I said, I want all the cities that you insure, because that's who we go through.
Mm-hmm.
That have a pool.
Yeah.
They gave me a list of four, one still hasn't, all the other ones have been covered up in our grass.
Right.
Because they have the same issues.
Right.
That we do.
Right.
The only one that still has a pool is the city, the city, I don't think they're a city, the town of Twist.
Yeah.
And that's often because they have absolutely nothing in the town of Twist. So they took it upon themselves to say, we have nothing here, or we have to have something for the kids. They certainly don't have an issue with, I don't know what is in Twist, but probably not a a baby. You know, there's no baby.
Racer.
Racer.
And they had uh somebody step up and say, well, we'll fund it, that possibly here. And so they um they sent their budget and sent us uh four years of their budget and how they keep, how they fund it.
Yeah.
They pay it, they do it, and they pay for a um person to run it. So um it's not cheap, but it they the council just made up their mind that they wanted something for the kids to do because there's nothing there. And it's also an outdoor pool, so it's only used three months out of the year, about the same as ours, so, which was, I was surprised. So anyway, we. Yeah.
I did email the city just today, and um I emailed them. And I reached out to tonight, I know because I do know that they have a rock park, so they're in the middle of updating. And I know that's not in true to AWC, but I know they have.
And I really know, I'm telling you, you brought that to me.
Six years, so. I'm hoping to hear back from them, cause it's also gonna go in my pool folder, speak with you guys though. I asked you to know what they offer, how well their timelines, who manages it, how do they manage it? I also did some digging, found an old box that had a lot of really good information. It included how our pool came back to life, um and how they planned on funding it every year, there's a lot of great info. I did send that out to Michelle. And so that's that's a folder to me, if you guys have overlooked it at that time, but I'm trying to gather all that info.
And do we have a city's property inventory document that we have access to? Do we have a a list of like the properties we own and their current statuses and?
I'm sure.
It was, it was in the, it was in the budget, it was out, you know, work last year.
Ah, here's one here, next time.
Well, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't.
Expensive.
It wasn't expensive, it was like this and this and this and this, so it carries museum and and.
For a year.
Okay, these are to compile a whole list and, you know. And you, you know, what age, estimated age of the roof and suspected time and uh so that's actually kind of how we got a lot of that mixed. For the uh facilities plan and how we.
I do, I think, I agree with Steve, and I think that one of the issues that I hear from our community.
Hey, Chris.
Chris, sorry, I looked over here, Steve is not here, hi Steve. Um that um I think one of the concerns from a lot of the community is is that Raymond isn't known for being a really great landlord. So I think that we can, if the council can help support whatever way we can to build processes, like Steve's talking about having that inventory. And being a better landlord in general for all of our properties, not just our cornerstone amenities. So I think it's just something that, I know you have nothing on your desk, but that was my thing, I'd love to see us kind of working.
At any one point in time, it wasn't difficult because it weren't the city and it's just seems like the bigger we get, the more things get. Set aside, forgotten, or just pushed aside and left over.
Well. That's that's solved by the need for a good management system.
That's right, I I agree.
And if you have a good management system, good plan, then flags come up, you do your work and you're fine.
Yeah, and I agree, I I'm not, I'm not making excuses for anybody, telling you, I absolutely agree.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I get, I get, there's a lot of community investment in it, and there's a lot of feelings about it, and I'm also like, hey, so. Was anything good, and I'm like, I know Tia's out there, just go look, she's in a, she's in a onesie right now, half minute pool hanging over the side of the fence, just ask her what's going on.
All right, did you have anything else for?
Yeah.
You, okay, um so anything for from this conference, Tia?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Uh so I'm pretty much your line here for, um I did wanna let the council know that they're moving, uh still moving forward with the fire hall, city hall. Um you got. I I I'd like for the engineers and the architects to be able to, uh you guys can give you a good idea of of what we have. And why we're where we are um as far as location. Uh we have six potential sites, um very in various places within the city. Uh we did a great job uh mapping them out and then taking uh basic puzzle pieces, really of everything that's needed. And taking those puzzle pieces and showing how the the sites that we have, they would not fit based on different places and location. And so we got to the line eight street part and how it will all fit and different, they they worked for probably a couple hours uh. Uh last week, um how they're gonna lay it all out, what's the best way to go. And so I would suspect you'll probably see something um in uh July, maybe the end of July, I don't know, so, but it is moving forward. Um and hopefully it's exciting, uh why aren't you telling the day what we came up, came to sixteen and this and how the city today? We almost had a city hall much sooner.
Uh I'll let you inside the heating unit, so. It's a little bit weird, but they have it um working. So then you had a new circuit board for Peter Butt.
The circuit board was uh black and melted, smells in here. And the the panel, the control panel on the wall, when they took it off, was all black and melted.
Yeah.
There was that.
So what I'm hearing is that we really need a new city hall.
Sounds like a thing.
Well, we almost got one way certain, but I don't know what it was. But anyway, and um I would like to also thank uh. Uh Raymond P D um for all their work on Sunday, um I really, really appreciate it. It was nice to see your presence um at the park and I think we have done really, really well, better than I hoped, or. It was, it was great and there wasn't any issues and that was my biggest concern, that that would there potentially could have been issues and there wasn't it. And that was a great day for everybody that was there, so thank you very, very much. And I wanted to apologize to the council for not being here, uh like the last meeting, I know it was very contentious. I couldn't heal it, but I know it wasn't great, um I it couldn't be helped, I was in Spokane, but I I appreciate them. Uh all for taking care of. Well, I appreciate that, so. Uh is there any public comment on any of the current agenda items? Okay, seeing none, um council clients, Ian?
Do we, do we need to have a resolution or something, or even if we don't need to, I think it's probably appropriate to. Make our new city flag, or show if for no other reason than to make sure Tia gets her credit, that she reserves for it.
Uh let me, let me look into that, I'll check that out, okay?
It might just be a proclamation or something.
Yeah, we could, one or the other, but I need a resolution uh recognizing T as our work.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um who writes all of our grants and stuff?
It depends on which brand. It depends on which grants you're talking about.
I would like to be a grant writer for the city.
Okay.
I would like to learn and do it, and do it well. I'll take some courses on it and, and I have the time, and I think it would be a, a challenging thing to do.
That sounds wonderful, it's definitely a challenge, um, you contact me and I'll hook you up with a couple of different agencies that, uh, have some amazing grants, uh, writing offerings for you.
I, I know there's a lot of tricks to it, that's why I want to learn how to do that, 'cause I would like to get as much money as we can for the city. The other thing I have to say is I apologize for being late, I had some technical difficulties.
Okay, it happens to the best of us.
And Steve, I'll send you that NLC bootcamp I'm currently in, that's a, I'm learning a lot about public work stats.
Okay, perfect.
Now, I think.
I just, time-wise, I think it'd be good.
Sounds fantastic, thanks, Steve.
Yep.
Uh, yes, uh, Tony?
Yeah, I was really happy to see that, uh, Pacific County Housing Development has opened up their application process for their building.
Yep, uh, July.
Obviously, obviously, they actually got the interior done.
July?
Eleventh?
July eleventh, they start on the waiting list, they'll start going through their waiting list, and like, when they get through their waiting list, they'll start aug, uh, in August for new, and all that.
So we could have more people on the streets by the end of the summer?
I would suspect you will, okay.
Eric, what's your parking plan for that?
They have parking in the back, um, and there'll be some free parking, um, that's one of the more intense issues, just do a couple of, uh, this is the, both of them.
Yeah.
Originally, uh, as of the comment, and, uh, I'm sure people here heard counsel, but definitely went through the, uh, any.
So the fire hall is over, Bill, how far do you, you stand out behind your building there? Not, not quite to the old Napa building?
Probably half, we're half that part of the lawn.
You're half that.
Okay.
We, we claim that space.
You, you, you claim it or you don't?
You don't have to.
The pressure is my.
Okay.
Yeah.
They have parking on the back of their block, so there's, around these, well, there's quite a lot of parking back there, but I don't believe it's.
Right, yeah, along the, in, along the alley.
Actually, in the back of the building, see now it paved it all.
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll.
Maybe it's not here.
Okay. Eric?
Any additional council comments? Okay, uh, any future agenda topics? Administration, um, if there's no objections, I will call this meeting adjourned.
Recording stopped.